April twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen to order, please, and we'll say this pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation, on the ground, indivisible, and every being just as for all.
So, we have the approval of the minutes from March twenty-sixth.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, abstain? The chair votes aye, so that's four, zero, one.
Did you hold it?
Okay.
What was the one?
You said, "I abstained."
You did?
No.
Oh, no, I just, it wasn't back in time.
You weren't back in time.
He was voting yes.
Would you like to vote aye?
Sure.
Okay, so we have five, zero, zero. Thank you very much. And I'd like to know if there's anyone here for public participation tonight? Okay, and now we're up to our information reports from our student representative, Rhea Coman, our senior.
Yep, hi everyone, how's it going?
Hi. Good.
So the freshmen have just finished with semi with the sophomore class and they've made a good amount of money from that since they changed their entire setup this year. They're looking at about a thousand dollars, but that's just an estimate right now. The freshman class are also possibly planning a Dave and Buster's fundraiser near mid-June. And then they also want to plan a Blaze fundraiser and a winter dance next year. So they're starting to talk about that with other classes that have done dances in the past. And then the sophomore class had a meeting today and they raised more than two thousand dollars from their semi bake sale and their candy grams as well at MCAS. They're also focusing their attention on prom and locations right now. They're currently calling many places to host the prom and discussing a rate. The junior class is working on a proposal for their New York trip for senior year this upcoming fall and they're brainstorming for a bigger fundraiser event this June. The senior class were working on ticket sales for prom because many people bought them after the sales were over. And then they're also working on prom favors and how to distribute them since many of the senior class are on internships now, so they won't be in their homerooms. And then their biggest focus right now is the senior banquet. That's it.
Madam Chair, may I just, again, jump around the agenda and put Rhea on the spots since she's, she's here? So, it's not that far off the agenda, but one of the things we wanted to discuss tonight was the senior internship program. You're participating in that, so if I'm going to give some background, I'm sure the committee is going to grill you with some questions, okay? Should be ready to answer. So the internship program has expanded this spring. We have over two hundred seniors participating in the program. We had fifty-five seniors last year under the direction of Assistant Associate Principal Deb Deacon and also with the help of Shereen Terrell, who's our computer science teacher, and Mr. Leroy Wong, who does our help desk. Our high school students have had amazing opportunities in their fields of interest and it runs between April eighth and May seventeenth.
Yep.
Some of the corporate partners that include MITRE, CGI, Microsoft, Salesforce, Synopsys, Apple, Amazon, and LAB, is that correct?
Yep.
All right.
And MGH as well.
And MGH is part of, that's great. This is a BHS career exploration program. There are career speakers who come in. We bring in professionals to speak with interested students, provide students with one-day job shadow opportunities. And then prior to the start of each internship, and again, Rhea can answer some specifics for you, students have to submit a proposal establishing the guidelines, expectations, and the deadlines for their intern study project. The proposal must include the following, again, a letter of intent detailing the student's goals, rationale for the internship activity, a current resume and transcript, so you put that together, site hours, site name, host and mentor name, and contact information, letter of acceptance from the host site, and this description of the final project. And the final projects are due May twenty-second. So it's much more of a capstone experience for seniors. And again, we have over two hundred seniors participating in our, Rhea is one of them, so I'm not sure, I'll give you some background, but I want to hear about it from your perspective. So you're enjoying the experience?
Yes, very much so. So there's three different options. You can either do a service project, an internship, or a flipped internship. So the service project is, some of the examples are, some of the art students are doing the murals. So if you see in the history department, there is one about like women's power. So they're doing something like focusing on speaking up and not being afraid of like talking about differences. I know there's another art student that's working on passing out the Brunn-Badaklan paintings with Ms. Chang. And then the flipped internship is with Mr. Wong and Ms. Tyrell. And they're in the lower library working with different companies as Dr. Conti said. And then the internships are like, there are many varieties, but I work in the lab program, which is upstairs. And I work with fourteen to eighteen and eighteen to twenty-one-year-olds. So it's very different day-to-day activities. And they also go out in the community. So last week they went out to True North, which is right here in Burlington, which is really nice.
That's great, I'm glad to hear. How many students did you say participated?
Two hundred and twelve.
Two hundred and twelve, that's amazing. Out of, what, three hundred students in the graduating class or something?
Yep, two fifty.
Two fifty. Okay, that's fabulous. So, is there anything else that anyone wanted to say about the student internship program? Ms. Russo?
So I have a question. How does this work with, like if you have AP classes or you have a class where you have a test you still need to finish up?
So for me, before my internship started, I used the rotational schedule that we have and I basically put it in Google Drive for every single day until like the end of my like AP test date. So I know like what time I have to go to like my period seven class or my period one class, which is AP Lit and AP Psych. And in AP Psych, she gives us like a little bit more flexibility of either going to a period one or period seven, so I can like plan out my day in that way, just like adjust my schedule.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
No, I just want to say, again, in Burlington, we're blessed in many ways, but I think we're also blessed with geography. We have many great companies who exist in town, support schools in town, and support our students. And I, I think we're just trying to do a much better job taking advantage of our location and the proximity of some of the opportunities that exist. And these are, again, global companies and they are just providing amazing opportunities. Would you, the reverse internship, I thought was an interesting idea too, a creative spin. So the reverse internship, do you know anything about that?
Not like a lot, but I just know that it's like in the lower library, some kids are working with drones and some kids are like working on like their own specific projects. So they're grouped into either like four or five like kids among each group and then they focus on like a different project.
Yeah, they're doing a lot of projects, which is great, but one of the challenges in our area is, for instance, there are incredible engineers working at MITRE, but they don't want high school students entering their, their job site because of all the security reasons. So the reverse internships are actually when we bring the engineers from MITRE into Burlington High School. So the kids are working on group projects and then the engineers from some of these companies that have limited access or limited opportunity for access are coming to us. And so that's, that's the idea of the reverse internship. And again, Ms. Terrell was really key in setting up some of these reverse internships. So again, it's just been an amazing work, again, and tremendous effort from Ms. Deacon, Leroy Wong, and Shereen Terrell. So I just want to make sure I thank them and recognize them. And I wanted to take advantage of your expertise while you were here. So I apologize, Madam Chair, but just wanted to hear, hear directly from someone who's participating in the, in the internship program.
And so even though most of the people coming in are in the tech field and the bio field, but there are students doing all kinds of different internships, like you're working with students with special needs.
Yep.
And is that a career you're interested in going into?
Yes, most likely. I also like want to become a teacher, so this is also a different like expertise that I'm looking into.
Great, good. Are there other fields that you're aware, you know of that are, other than technology? The bio industry, no?
No, I, I worked there, I was interviewed today by four students working on a project. I'm forgetting exactly what they're doing. I know we have some students who internship with the police department every year and they're training really hard, I see them in the morning. And I think that's a great opportunity. And so again, I think everyone here has been really supportive of working with our students in their areas of interest. And I think it's just a, it's a great learning experience and a very practical learning experience for students to have.
Dr. Gould is actually working with two students on a research study. I don't know too much about it because they didn't want to inform everyone about the study because there could be bias if they give too much information, which is something we learned actually.
Other comments or, no? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any subcommittee reports? Any subcommittees met?
No.
Or Ways and Means?
Again, just, it's on the agenda later, so we can talk about it later. But Mr. Murphy and Ms. Kasha attended the bylaw subcommittee, I think prior to last meeting.
It was actually the full bylaw committee.
I'm sorry.
Regarding the proposed bylaw change.
Right.
They didn't vote while we were there, but I was told that they did vote afterwards to support the requests. They seemed very supportive in the discussion, but they didn't vote. We had to leave to come to this meeting.
So again, I think that's later on the agenda, we can get into those specifics. But I think that was the meeting that I knew had occurred.
All right, next is the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, PQA audit results. Can you tell us what PQA is before we go on?
I can. So the, you recognize some of this, and again, the state changes the acronyms just to make it confusing for everybody, but the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education State Compliance Monitoring of Special Education and Civil Rights, that used to be called the Coordinated Program Review, remember the CPR?
Yep.
Is now called the Tiered System of Monitoring, of Monitoring, and that is the PQA. It's scheduled every three years in place of every six years, so they want to do it more frequently. In Burlington Public Schools, we just went through our tiered monitoring this past fall and again, we got our results back. So we are happy to report that Desi found Burlington Public Schools being full compliance in the area of special education. So I think that was very good news and a real tribute to that department, that staff and Mary Hood for sort of coming in and getting us through that, the three-year tiered monitoring process. And it's again, a great testament to the work of her staff as well. And the district was found in partial compliance in three areas of civil rights. And one finding was the wording in the handbook that was corrected and voted at our last meeting. So you, you made that correction. And the other two were related to the review of curriculum materials by teachers to look for bias. So we just mentioned bias. And we have a corrective action plan that's been accepted for these partial findings. So we have to submit a corrective action plan and the state's accepted that. So again, in, in three years, they'll come back out and they'll look at us again for, basically our, that's our federal compliance, which would be our special education processes and our civil rights processes. So again, I think that was, you know, very good news. To have three sort of partial findings is, means we're doing almost everything correctly. So that's, that's, again, we wanted to share positive news about a, our, the new tiered monitoring process.
Any other comments on that? I just wanted to ask you, when they found a partial compliance for the curriculum review, is that because we hadn't done a curriculum review or they reviewed the curriculum and found things that needed to be looked at?
It's because, if you looked at our curriculum review sort of process, we didn't mention that we looked for bias in that review. So it was, it's more about the process than we hadn't been doing it. So we needed to articulate that that's one of the areas. So, so through the chair, we would look for alignment with standards, for instance, to make sure that our curriculum was covering the state standards. But they would also want us to see that in addition to the state standards, we're looking for bias.
Okay, good, all right, thank you very much. Next is the issue of, the transportation bid and contract. So if I can, shall I pass it on to you, Mr. Kuna?
Please, thank you.
Okay, and you gave us some forms, so will we need these now?
Nope, I'll go over that in a quick second, so again, thank you. Yeah, I did pass out to you tonight the bid form that was received back from the participating vendors. There's also a summary page, which I created that would give you a breakdown showing what our current contract costs were versus what the bid received prices are. In the notes, it gives a description of what our daily rate used to be versus what the proposed rate would go to and it would give you the increase percentage as well too. It is an increase and there's a little bit of a sticker shock, so it's definitely something that we're going to have to talk about. You'll, will notice that on the summary, that there are additional items that weren't in the previous bid that are in this bid now. One of them, for example, is bus monitors. So that is something that we've handled in the district in the previous bid, but it is something that we're looking to move outside. So while it's not a one-for-one cost exactly because somebody else handling it, the cost would go up a little bit. It is something that we would like to not have in-house and maybe move outside, but again, up for discussion. If you've noticed out in the crowd, Rich LaBrie is here as well. Again, I want to thank Rich for all the work that he's done with this. And in a minute, I'm probably going to ask him to come up, so if there's any questions, him or myself can answer them for you. So I want to say I'm happy that we got bids, but I want to say that I'm slightly disappointed on the number of bids that we got back. So when we had our bidders meeting back on March twenty-ninth, we had four bus vendors show up to ask questions. The bus bid specs went out to roughly sixteen vendors the day of the bid. We got one vendor who actually submitted a bid. Two other vendors showed up to the meeting but did not submit a bid. So again, I mean, we were seeking competition. We know that we had a very, very good rate on our previous one, our previous contract that we currently are in right now. And most of the bus vendors that we've talked to recognized how cheap our rates were. The rates that we got on the new one, while they are an increase, are very, very competitive, if not the lowest around still. But again, it is an initial sticker shock because it is an increase. So again, we're looking at a bid from five years ago, obviously, to now. And since then, what we've seen is FMLA is required, insurance is required for bus drivers. We're looking at off-time, training time, number of hours are up and so forth. So again, all of those costs are now back on the bus company, which we weren't privy to in our last contract, but are now. So, like I said, I'd definitely take any questions. I know you're going to have to absorb some of this, but I'm here and like I said, we'll ask Rich to come up as well too. Ideally, you know, we'd like to have a situation where we could either answer questions and then possibly vote tonight to accept this. But if we need more time, of course, then if we could put it on a further meeting for a vote. Thanks.
All right, would you join us, Mr. LaBrie? And, yes, Mr. Murphy?
Thank you. Bob, is the, the one bid, is it from the same vendor or is it a new vendor?
It is the current vendor that we have, yes.
I guess I just, comment would be that it would have been nice to have some competition, I agree. But frankly, I think the fact that there was interest, there were people attending meetings and didn't bid is, is in a way, competition because they, they realized that, and Rich pointed this out the first night he was here, that we had pretty good numbers with our existing contract. And I'm sure they all knew that that vendor was back in the room as well and they probably just figured they couldn't beat it, so they're not even going to bother to try. So the fact that there was no competition is disappointing, but like I said, to me, it was, I think, competition in all of the other vendors' minds and that they chose not to even try to, to bid because they figured that they weren't going to do better than what the current vendor was going to do. Personally, I've been very satisfied with them. So I would have been more disappointed had a new vendor come in out of the, out of the left field who we don't have experience with and without any type of a track record, who came in substantially lower than everybody else because then I'd be nervous. But I feel fairly comfortable that with our history with this vendor over the years and his record for providing good service at a reasonable price. And granted, it's roughly a thirty-seven percent increase, which obviously is not an insignificant amount of money, but I think we all knew it was going to be a few bucks. We had this discussion back during the guidelines and the understanding that the delta was going to not be included in our, in our guidelines because of the unknown. So, would have been nice if it was lower, but I would be willing to support the bid. And if the, if it's the will of the committee to move forward tonight, I would be in favor of that.
Yes, Ms. Russo?
I too have been very pleased with how this company has been handling different instances that have come up in the past, how they've handled just athletics. That's a different animal, a different group of children going to and from and even the bus drivers and the company's been very responsive to them. If I could just ask you, so we're looking at increase. How does this relate to other increases that you've seen or where's this put Burlington? Because you talked about last time how low we were compared to everybody else. How high have we now jumped?
Typically, I've seen between seventeen and twenty percent increases this year for companies that have gone to bid. When you look at the cost of transportation next year for those companies that have gone out to bid either last year or this year going forward, some of the increases have been even larger than that. The reason being is that if you were at the end of a, of a multi-year contract this year or last year, you ended up absorbing all of these increases from the, from the state that were passed on for part-time employees without any recourse to recoup any of that money under that contract. So what they've done is, looking forward, they know what they see on the horizon, they built that into their cost structure moving forward. And more than one vendor has said to me, and that's only what we know about now, there's no guarantee that the state or the federal government isn't going to mandate more benefits or compensation for part-time employees moving forward. And so they've had to build in some type of a safeguard to protect themselves in that regard.
Thank you.
Yes. You don't have the opportunity with only one bid to, you know, pick the low one or whatever. Is it still a legitimate process when there's only one person, one company that bids?
Absolutely. Quite frankly, the other two vendors did tell us that they could not have matched the A&amp;F price had they bid, primarily because they would have been buying new buses for this contract. They didn't have buses laying around, that your current vendor already has buses in place.
So they said that they couldn't have met A&amp;F's bid, the new bid?
They didn't know what.
The one with the thirty-seven percent increase?
They didn't know his new price, but they assumed that his new price would still be less than their bid price.
Well, I hear you, but on the other hand, had they known it was a thirty-seven percent increase, I wonder if they would have felt the same way.
Just through the chair, Rich, you said something to me, I think, before the meeting or maybe it was Bobby said something to me. All the other bids that you've seen come in, just to give the committee some perspective, where did this bid fall? So in the other communities that you've seen?
Only one lower that I've seen.
In the, in the state?
In, in, in those that I've, I have privy to, which is probably thirty to thirty-five school districts that have gone to bid.
So the thirty-five school districts that you've seen gone to bid, this would be the?
One, one of the lowest.
One of the lowest, bottom one or two, so.
One of the lowest, in what way?
In terms of cost per day per bus. Let me explain one thing. The issue that, that is, that is going to impact the budget is not necessarily the cost per day per bus. It's the fact that the benchmark was so low at the beginning moving forward. When you look at your cost per day per bus next year, you're still well under the state average for those districts that have gone to bid in the last, either this year or, or last year, moving forward. And it's in the materials that I submitted with my recommendation. And it's substantially a, a big difference in terms of the, the difference between your cost per day per bus next year and the averages. And the, the issue is not necessarily the cost per day per bus. The real issue is the budget impact. And the budget impact is so great because you were so low to begin with. If you had gone to bid a year ago, or even better, two years ago, before the state mandates had come into play, you would have, you would have seen a different bid structure at that time. And the contractor would have had to have eaten all of those increases, mandatory increases in that period. They now have the luxury of being on the tail end of that and looking forward. They now know what those costs are going to be. And, and those costs alone for compensation, in some cases, are up to twenty percent of their cost of, of operation. As you know, the cost, the cost of drivers and compensation is, is more than sixty-five percent of the cost of your, your daily contract, so.
Yes. Bobby, what happened with regard to the, the buses equipped with seat belts? Or if they get new buses, they will be, you know, is that part of this?
So the bid that everyone had the opportunity to bid on was shared with you, was shared with Ways and Means as well too. The existing buses do have lap belts and the new buses required will have lap belts as a minimum and must meet any federal or state regulations requiring seat belts in general. So as a minimum, they will have lap belts on their new buses. So any person who bid on this contract, since it's the same, you know, incumbent company that has it, they already have that on their buses.
Thank you.
I just want to make one more comment as well too. So Rich just mentioned it and I didn't share with you yet, but he did give me a report that has a recommendation as well in this, that has roughly twenty, I got to count to twenty-two, I think, this is the last time I checked, but twenty-two recent bids in the past one or two years within this state. And it gives the current price of the contract, next year's price of the contract, and where we fall. So when you mentioned that they are two lower than us, there are by a few dollars. But again, that wasn't a contract that was entered into this year, that was an existing contract. So year two, they may have been able to catch up to us, but I agree that it is a large increase, but we were so fortunate to have a favorable price in the past that this is, you know, it seems large. But when I do share this, and I can print this right now and give this to you, and like I said, we can come back to this later. But when you see these numbers that other towns, surrounding towns next to us are paying, we've had a good deal and I think we're getting a good deal again, so.
If I could just, I'll just give you the numbers, I've got it right in front of me. This year, the average of the districts that went to bid last year for this year and next year moving forward, the average this year is three hundred and ninety dollars and eighty-seven cents per day per bus, compared to your cost this year of two eighty-five per day per bus. So the average is over a hundred and five dollars more than you're currently paying. So that's where the difference in the benchmark is when you move forward. Next year, the average is four hundred and nine dollars and thirty-six cents per day per bus. And you next year are at $366. So, again, you're 40, some odd 40, almost $50 per day per bus less than the average of those districts that have recently gone to bid. But as Bob said, attached to my recommendation is a list of those school districts. And you'll see that some of them are very, very high comparatively speaking. And from my perspective, you have a good contractor who's proven high-quality service at what I call a reasonable price. Now, I'm not saying it's a negligible budget impact. I'm just saying that the bid is both responsive and responsible and that the cost per day per bus is reasonable for the level of service that you've been getting and that I feel comfortable you will continue to get.
Yes, Mr. Nelson.
Bob, I have a question on the bid summary sheet. The bus monitors, are these what we would call bid alternates? That they're add-ons? We have an option to select them or not select them?
Yes, Mr. Nelson, that is correct. We do not have to have them go outside of Burlington and have the bus company hire the bus monitors. We can continue to keep them in-house and employ them here.
Because it looks like we're not paying anything right now for bus monitors? Or are we just absorbing that in-house and it's somewhere in our budget?
Go ahead.
Yes, to the second part. It was not in the original bid to actually include the price of the bus monitors in there. But when it was needed to add bus monitors to our situations on the bus, they're absorbed in our operating budget.
Okay. Were you paying over a quarter of a million dollars right now for bus monitors? I mean, it seems like a huge amount.
I think it depends. And when we asked all the folks who were directly impacted by the transportation contract, Mary Hood, our sped director, one of the sort of main areas she wanted to see was that the bus company take over the monitors, the hiring of monitors. So, she said if you looked at the amount of time her staff spends trying to find, hire, and get monitors for buses, she may need to ask for an additional support person in her office just to do the monitor work. So, again, it wasn't an expense now. When we spoke again to Rich, our consultant, he said most of the bus companies have taken on that responsibility and taken it off the district's plate because it's been a real challenge, not only to find bus drivers, but it's been almost more difficult to find bus monitors to do the work.
Is that something, though, right now that's in the accommodated account? Or is it in our account?
I'd have to find that out, Mr. Nelson. I don't know.
That's all I have. I can know that information.
Yes, Ms. Monica. In what situations do we use bus monitors? I know, for instance, in a van with, say, a couple of kids going to Melmark, there's a bus monitor. But is that, we have nine here, is it all out of district special ed?
I think it's mostly out of district special ed. I think every preschool bus has a, I have to check that, but I think they're mostly on-
But that's in district special ed?
Yes, they're mostly on the special ed, but we're still trying, we're still finding those folks.
If I could, in addition to the nine that you have in this bid package, you also employ 12 other bus monitors, or you pay for 12 other bus monitors for both in-district special education and early childhood.
I just want to clarify, so we also have additional bus monitors beyond what's listed here?
Yes.
For the in-district?
Yes.
And that we will continue to be responsible for?
Those monitors are paid by the contractor. You pay for them, you don't employ them.
Okay, so they are in this?
They are in the RFP for special education.
Okay.
Which is not part of this bid.
And how are they different from the items that were listed as additional items? Yeah, what are these for, these nine?
So, in-district transportation for special ed and non-special ed kids is handled in this bid. Out-of-district special ed transportation is not part of this bid.
Right, that's okay.
Right, so any bus monitors on the out-of-district special ed students are supplied as the pricing for that transportation at that cost per vehicle and monitor.
So, these nine monitors would be for special ed in district, like preschool?
Minibus, wheelchair buses, early childhood.
And because they're in district, they're in this bid?
Correct. And that's why there's nine.
Yes, but there's only nine, so that's a reasonable number.
Yes.
So, I also was wondering, on this three-page sheet you gave us, the bid form, at the end, it talks about optional equipment. Can you tell us, is that included in what's on this summary sheet? It says total cost year one, A plus B plus C. And below that, there's additional things listed, like GPS and digital cameras and such. So, can you tell me why is that separated out or what it means?
So, when the bid was put together, depending on who either got the bid, who didn't get the bid, and/or what the district wanted, we had optional equipment listed. So, the price that you see in the square on that third sheet, that 2.295, that is the total price prior to adding any of the optional equipment. So, should we choose GPS? We would add that cost on however many buses we would like that per day, times the number of buses.
Okay, so we don't need to get, we can opt for these on specific buses and not all of them?
Yes.
Okay.
But again, at an additional cost above and beyond.
Okay.
The idea was to create a menu that you could choose from, the options that you wanted to include in your contract later on. But that would be based upon, once you knew what the cost per day per bus was, whether you felt it was affordable and necessary. But that would be a school committee decision at that point.
So, how do we proceed with that decision? And when does that happen?
So, if we're talking about the additional equipment, that would be something that either the district would make a decision on and/or a superintendent or a principal would make a recommendation on. Fine, if we're not looking at the additional equipment and we just want to go with the bid as presented, again, then the recommendation would come from myself, Dr. Conti, of course, Mr. Labrie, and then the school committee would take a vote on that.
So, what we are possibly voting on tonight is the bid without the optional equipment?
Correct.
Is that correct? All right. So, I guess the next question is, do people feel comfortable voting on this tonight? Oh, Dr. Conti, sure.
And I'm sorry, Bobby, I'm sorry to answer this, I'm sorry. So, we're looking for, if there's a warrant, we're looking for, between the delta from last year to what was proposed in the bid, $821,123. So, we're looking at the difference between the base bid of 37% increase at $547,073 and then the $274,050 for the monitors, the in-district summer transportation and the monitors for the summer. And so, for Ways and Means, so on the warrant, there would be, and for the planning, we would look for an additional $821,123. Is that, I just-
That is correct.
I'm looking over at Sue to check my math.
Same, I had it written down, but I need to double-check it again, so.
Mr. Eiler.
I agree with that number. I had just a few questions. So, first, I just wanted to understand some of the bid numbers here. The, you know, obviously with the increase, total increase being 37%, with all the individual increases being, you know, 25-ish percent, obviously, some of the services must have been increased to account for that. So, I see where two additional late buses were added. Now, it's like my late bus went up by 300%. But I'm looking at the minibus, which went up 62%, even though the rate only went up, you know, by 50% somewhere. Was there some significant increase in the minibus services that are being bid here versus what we're having around?
So, there's two additional minibuses?
And that's because we have more students or?
And again, so those two minibuses are actually in service now. It's just that versus the initial bid, that price is the difference, so.
And similarly with the athletics, music, field trips, that's up 34%, even though the rate's 28%. And has that been increased in the amount of services there?
So, again, through the chair?
Yes.
So, Mr. Eiler, yes. So, through those events, when this was bid five years ago, it was 350 hours. Since then, athletics trips, field trips, and music events have gone up. So, now it's 450 hours over five years. So, the bid that you're looking at shows 450 hours worth of a new price per day per trip of a bus.
Okay, that all makes sense. And then, so we're a little confused about the bus monitors. In the FY '19 operating budget, line 30 has bus monitors, line item that's budgeted for $100K. Was there a similar FY '20 line item for bus monitors? I don't know.
Nor do I.
Because if there wasn't, that would seem to sort of violate the idea of the FY '20 budget encompassing the FY '19 efforts for transportation.
I have to find you that answer, Mr. Eiler.
Okay.
And then, just one final question.
Okay.
And I don't know, you have insight, you have insight, I'm just curious. You know, one of the good innovations I thought that you suggested was the fuel escalator and cola. Do we have any sense that A&amp;F said, great, I don't have to bid quite as much now? Or they say, okay, you know, more bonus money for us? Apparently, we have any sense at all how they reacted to that.
I guess I can, I'll share with you a question that I asked A&amp;F. Having seen the budget impact, I asked the president and owner if there was anything within that first-year cost that could be deferred into other years to lessen the initial budget impact. And he indicated that he would look, but he didn't think so, but he would at least take a look. They did call me on Friday of last week and indicated to me that they had just written a substantial check for, to the state, for compensation that they hadn't planned on and that they did not think that there was anything that they could defer into future years. But at least, at least he did look at it. And that would have been the time, if there was something, whether it's fuel or driver compensation, or cola, or anything, that he would have, he would have put that on the table.
Mrs. Monica. Can you give us a few examples of what the state has required that has cost the bus companies so much that they're going up to this extent?
There were state-mandated wage and benefit increases for part-time employees. Among them was paid sick leave for part-time employees up to 40 hours, plus the added cost of substitute drivers and bus monitors for those who took their 40 hours. Their 40 hours is not generally spread over a week. These are part-time employees, so that could be two to three weeks of time, spread over time. Mandatory leave with pay. Employer contribution to mass health, which averages $700 per employee, for part-time employee. Drivers and monitors included. State prevailing wage went up 7.87% for bus drivers. Minimum wage went up a dollar and is scheduled to continue to go up over the future and it has a, it's going to raise the boat for all classifications of employees in the transportation industry. There were liability insurance cost increases over the past five years. And due to statewide bus driver shortages, there have been increases in driver wages and increased commitment for hours, which means that typically a contractor was able to offer bus drivers a guaranteed two hours in the morning and two hours in the afternoon. That is not necessarily enough to be able to retain and recruit quality drivers. And in some cases, they have to provide them, exclusive of the cost per hour, more hours to get them to be able to work because it is a split shift. And it's difficult to get people to work two hours in the morning, go home for four hours or five hours, and then come back and work again in the afternoon. They've had to initiate paid training for recruitment of drivers, and that's 80 hours of paid training. And in this case, A&amp;F indicated that they were buying eight new buses to meet the five-year requirement coming in. And the president told me that even if we had a requirement of no bus older than 10 years for the life of the contract, he still would be buying seven new buses because he has his own replacement plan for buses. And he was quite frank with us, and he said, "If I don't replace seven buses this year, I will not be competitive in the next contract because my whole fleet will have to be replaced all at once." And that was a cost of about $623,000 for those seven buses. Amortized over a five-year period, it came up to a little under $143,000 a year in annual payments for those buses. And as I said, that's what we know about so far, as far as mandated increases. And there may be more.
Thank you.
I just wanted to comment on that. Obviously, when we think about the contract and looking for the lowest bidder, we are, you know, this is a lot of money, and it's like, ugh, it's going to be a big expense. But when I hear what some of those increases are, I mean, these people, the bus drivers and the monitors, are the people who are taking care of our children and keeping them safe. And the fact that they now have some additional compensation or benefits and protection is, I think, a good thing because we, I mean, we don't want our bus drivers turning over all the time. And we want, you know, we want to be able to keep the people, I mean, we all know the bus driver who says hi to the kids every morning, and we're glad to have those people here. So, although it's a squeeze to pay for it, I'm glad that there are some additional benefits for people working in this industry. So, I just wanted to comment on that. Yes, Mr. Nelson?
Yeah, just a quick reply. I don't want to get into a long political comment. I just wish that when these new mandates are implemented, there was more conversation about, and we talk about unfunded mandates all the time. There's more conversation so the taxpayers know what it's going to cost them. I mean, the state is great at increasing benefits and wages and things, but they never really tell taxpayers and the communities, you're going to have to foot the bill. It's not coming out of state revenue, it's going to come out of property tax revenue. And that's what's happening here with all these mandates, coming out of the property tax.
I call it the law of unintended consequences.
All right, yes, Mrs. Monica. Eric, on these additional items, John brought up the $100,000 that was in last year's budget. What about the in-district summer special ed transportation and the summer bus monitors? Were those, how were those paid for in the past, do you know?
No, I'm going to have to check where those came out of. They might have been grant-funded, or I'd have to see.
Okay. And, summer bus monitors. All right, so maybe we should vote this with an understanding that we will find out the answer to that and not try to skirt the intent, which, you know, would have been if we were paying the, if some of this was coming out of the budget that should still be coming out, we need to fix it.
Absolutely. I just would have to ask Mary in special ed, because I think most of the summer stuff is the extended-year services, so I just want to know what the impact is and how she's funding that now, and I don't-
And how it was funded before?
Correct. If it was grant-funded, then it wouldn't have, wouldn't impact our operating budget. Or maybe, I don't know, I just have to ask her.
I know, can we still grant fund it?
Yes.
So why don't we vote this with the understanding that we will explain that and possibly reduce the number if we're able to?
I think you can always change the number right on town meeting floor, so that would be something that you could do.
How about if one of the lawyers makes a motion, so?
If you'd like, I drafted a motion for you to consider. If you'd like me to just read it into the record?
Please.
The Burlington School Transportation Bid IFB dated March thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen, representing the regular in-district transportation, special education, and early childhood buses, midday kindergarten, special education, summer bus transportation, bus monitors, athletic and activity buses, and late buses, be awarded to A and F Bus Company, Inc., at a bid price of three hundred and sixty-six dollars for three-tier, seventy-one-passenger buses, three hundred and thirty dollars for thirty-five-passenger buses, three hundred and forty dollars for wheelchair buses, seventy-one dollars per day for midday kindergarten, twenty-three dollars and sixty-four cents per hour for bus monitors, and eighty-two dollars per day for late buses. Such total cost not to exceed two million, two hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars, and on the basis of their being the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and in the best public interest.
That was exactly what I was going to say.
Word for word.
So I'll move that.
And I will second that.
Okay, any further discussion?
Do you want to give Sharon that wording?
Sharon, I have it, I'll give it to you.
And seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
I abstain.
Chair votes aye, four zero one. Thank you very much for your assistance in this process, it's been very helpful, and your knowledge about this has been great, thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
And now we will discuss, pardon, oh, someone, we have a question on this item? Okay, come on up.
Second floor town meeting, precinct four, I got in late, so how many, how many vendors bid on this?
One.
Oh, was that?
They actually, we, Mr. Kuna presented a whole series of information on that. Briefly, there were four vendors that attended an information session, sixteen vendors who received a bid, but only one bid was submitted, even though there were additional vendors who were present, and they expressed a knowledge that they felt that the bid that we got would be lower than what they could do. Is that a fair summary of it? And also, given that the one vendor is a vendor we've used, that we're comfortable, I'm trying to summarize, that we're comfortable with, fuel is competent and highly qualified, and this new bid is now still at the low end of all of the statewide contract numbers, so that's why. And if you want more information, do you have another specific question?
Well, just one other one, but I was hoping to see the contract online.
Well, we just got it, I mean, so.
So you just read it yourself?
We just got it here, and is this something that we can put up on the website? Now that it's been approved, approved, okay?
Okay, thanks, and then lastly, so I just couldn't help myself, the number crunching, has anyone crunched the numbers in terms of quantifying some of the explanations that, I'm sorry, I don't know.
Mr. LeBree?
Gave, I don't know if anyone crunched those numbers to say, you know, this is the impact of the, of the increase. You know, had it not been for these seven things or three things, I don't know how many of those affect us directly.
Is the summary sheet something that we would put on the website, does that kind of answer, is that the answer to the question? The summary sheet has what percent increase there was in each category?
I guess without saying it, I don't know, but, I mean, if these are, if these are.
Do you have more of these?
Yeah, it's copyrighted.
If these are new mandates, I guess my point is, how have, how have the new mandates affected the contract?
Well, okay, we don't have, I mean, they affected it, but we don't know exactly, and Mr. LeBree just explained how the, the vendor went and looked at some possible options and still had a payment of hundreds of thousands of dollars that they had to pay the state, so.
It's just, it's just helpful to be able to quantify these items and say, plus, you know, about ten percent, fifteen percent of the eight hundred thousand, that's all.
Is that much?
Yeah, that's, that's.
Do you have any answer to that?
I just want to say, so that is on the sheets that Sharon does have available to you, one is the bid numbers that were presented to us.
Okay.
The second one is a summary sheet, that does have the difference of the existing contract versus the new prices, the dollar value and the percentage increase in those.
Okay, all right, I'll take a look, all right, thank you.
Okay, any further questions on this? Okay, all right, and so now, oh.
No, I'm just.
Sue, yes, sorry.
Do we also need more output to do a five-year bid, or are we?
There's a warrant article submitted, selectmen did that, I think, two, two or three weeks ago, so there will be a warrant article. And there was some conversation, whereas we might need one, we might not, but we have one in there, and we just need some clarification.
And for people who don't know the context of that, I'd like to try to repeat it, and you tell me if I got it right, which is that previously, there was a bylaw that we could only do a three-year bus contract without additional vote in town meeting, and so there's been a bylaw article.
The bylaw is separate, school committees can only approve three-year contracts, so I think we typically had done a three-year with a two-year extension. What Mr. LeBree said is going right to a five-year contract would have, allow the vendor then to spread those costs out over five years and not try to recoup all of his expenses in the first three years. So he felt we would get a better bid price just going straight to five years, so we have to go to town meeting for that. The warrant article is because what we said is, the warrant article would be for the increase in transportation costs that was outside of the operating budget. I just have to have a clarifying conversation, because I'm not sure if the warrant article is necessary, like a warrant article for eight hundred and twenty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars, or whether when they adopt the school operating budget, someone can just change the bottom line by eight hundred and twenty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars. So I have to, want to talk to the moderator, I want to talk to Amy, I just want to see what, how they want to go about doing this. But there is a placeholder warrant there, and Paul, obviously, I didn't want to exclude Paul, but to say how they want to go about demonstrating that the transportation increase was calculated, or sort of, not even calculated, we facilitated that conversation outside of the operating budget that people are going to see. So they're going to see the operating budget guideline, and then they're going to see this other warrant article, there's other amount, and I think we need to explain that.
Okay, Mr. Nelson?
Eric, does the warrant article include requests that the town meeting approve a five-year contract?
Yes.
That we can't withdraw it, because we need them, we can't just change our bottom line, because we need to have that warrant article voted on to make it a five-year contract.
Yes, so we have the warrant article in place, but I'm not sure if they're just approving the contract, or whether the dollar amount has to be, for the increase has to be associated with that. I just want to know what exactly needs to be there, but there is a warrant article for transportation.
Just make sure they don't withdraw the whole thing.
Yes, sir.
If they want us to put it into the bottom line, I don't have a problem with it, we can modify or amend the current warrant article that's out there, but we have to keep in the request for five years.
Five years, yes.
Okay, so hopefully, everyone understands that now. Okay, further questions? Seeing none, let us begin the discussion on the May town meeting warrant articles.
I think we've already discussed the warrant articles, but at your desk, there was an additional warrant that was added, and I just wanted to go into, this was the bylaw committee, again, that Mr. Murphy and Ms. Kasha attended. And this is asking town meeting to accept chapter forty, section three. And this came out of the two thousand and sixteen Municipal Modernization Act from the state. So the rules changed, and I know the question we're going to get is, why didn't we vote this in two thousand and sixteen? It's because we weren't leasing our, our surplus space for those two years, because the town departments were using those two years. So when we got a new tenant, now we're receiving revenue for what was formerly the Bay Path space, now is the lab administrative offices, we're receiving rental income now. And without accepting chapter forty, section three, or having town meeting accept this, again, originating from the Municipal Modernization Act of two thousand and sixteen, we could only use the revenue for rent on that particular space. So you could only use the lab administrative revenue for upkeep on the lab administrative space. If this bylaw change is accepted, then we could go back to the past practice where the rental income could be used by the school committee for the upkeep of any space. And again, it can only be used for the upkeep of space, it can't be used for sort of anything else. And this is the rental income that we use for the summer, that goes to the building rental account, that then funds the summer custodial painting technology help that we get in during the summer. So again, this is, again, it's a, it's a longstanding practice in the community. I just wanted to, the reasoning, again, is the Municipal Modernization Act, and the reason that it hasn't been voted before is we weren't renting that significant a space, we didn't have that much surplus space that we're renting. We have surplus space, but I'm, again, I think the BCAT, I think we sort of donate, I don't really know the arrangements there, I shouldn't even say anything. But the, the lab space that we're currently renting was provided to the town as swing space while they were doing their work.
Yes, Mr. Murphy?
Just one other component to the new law is that by accepting it, it allows us to keep the money in our account from year to year, as opposed to having it being turned back to the town at the end of each fiscal year, so it rolls over and stays in our account, which again allows us to do the extra things that Sue Pretender just mentioned. But that's, that's a second component of the statute, and it has to be specifically accepted by town meeting in order for it to apply.
And the account we keep it in is a specific account, and that is, could you explain, Mr. Dr.?
Building rental.
Building, yeah, go ahead.
Buildings and grounds rental account.
Okay, so it's a building and grounds rental account revolving fund?
Yes.
The type of account is a revolving fund?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and that account has not received a lot of rental money in the last couple of years, because it was being used by town, other town offices during the swing space for the human services.
Again, we receive building rental income all the time for sort of general, other things, but that sort of was, was our largest surplus space that we were renting.
Okay.
If a men's basketball league rents it for the basketball season, that's the type of thing that comes in.
Okay.
This is a fixed term lease.
Other questions?
And again, my understanding is the bylaw committee supported this four zero.
Yeah, they, Nicole and I had to leave after our presentation to get back to this meeting, so they discussed it, and the comments were favorable, but I understand that after, at the end of the meeting, they did take a vote, and it was four zero, and there were only four of them there.
Okay, thank you. All right, so is that the entire topic under this May town meeting warrant articles? Is there something else we need to discuss?
No, I just need to, I didn't get all the information yet on the transportation warrant article, and so again, Mr. Nelson, I know we'll keep the language in there for the five years, I just have to figure out if there's going to be money attached to the warrant, or just the approval of the lease and how they want to handle that. So I'll, so I'll let you know about my communications, and again, how people want to go about doing that. And so we can, we can go from there.
All right. In terms of communication, I'd just like to add here that if people do have questions about the budget that's going to be presented at town meeting, it is now available on the website, on the school committee page. If you look on the right side, there are actually three documents, one is the summary, it's maybe twenty pages describing the budget, the reasons for the various categories, how much we spend in salaries, et cetera, in a summary form. We also have the full budget, including all the detail of line items, and then there's a document, which is called the reductions sheet, and those reductions were removed from the full amount of the budget, the detailed budget, but there are very few categories of them, so it's pretty obvious to see where those are. So if people do want more information on the budget, we appreciated the, the couple of people who did come to discuss it at the budget hearing that we had. We spent a lot of time talking about it here with the school committee in the last several months, and I want to thank Dr. Conti and Mr. Kuna and Ms. Kasha for all their work putting together the budget, and for anybody who's interested, it is available now on the website. If people are not comfortable using internet, it's also available in hard copy, both the budget and the the reduction sheet at the clerk's office, at the library, and at the Council on Aging office facility. Okay, all right, so.
Madam Chair, too, and I apologize, what I'm handing out now is, Bob's ahead of me, no. This is the copy of the warrant article for the school transportation contract. So again, there is a line for the amount, typically, that amount had been in our operating budget, so that was the line that's blank, but the language in terms of approving the five-year contract, Mr. Nelson is there.
Thank you.
And this was voted, this was approved by the Board of Selectmen, five zero.
Okay, all right, are there any other, yes, this is.
So what number goes in there, the, the difference, or the whole budget?
So again, my understanding is, is that if it's just voting the bottom line of the current budget, then this will remain zero, and we'll vote on the, town meeting will vote on the five years.
Let me try, let me try again, so I have to ask where they want the number to exist. So typically, it's been in our operating budget, so if they want to see the eight hundred and whatever thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, if they want to see that on the operating line of the school budget, then we'll put it in there, and that's where the transportation costs will be, is in our transportation. Then all we're asking town meeting to do is approve the five-year length of the, of the, of the contract.
But that pushes our school budget up another eight hundred thousand dollars.
It does, but then, that's when we agreed to have that be outside of our, outside of our guideline. I just want to know where they want that increase to exist, and that was our conversation starting in the fall. And again, we could put just the increase here, we could put the total transportation cost here, I just want to know.
John's going to help us figure that out.
How people want us to do that, well, again, I think Paul needs to let me know how he wants it to be. We need to give him the total number, so we can put it into the, all of the factors that he's contributing across the board, and then we need to figure out where, where that exists. But the, the philosophy behind the conversation, or was that the increase in the transportation budget would be considered outside of the guideline and in a separate warrant article, and that's sort of, that's the process that we've gone through.
It's a lot of money.
Further comments or questions? All right, seeing none, is there any other communications, Dr. Conti? No? Okay, so, under old business, the first item is the elementary space needs, and I'm going to attempt to give a little summary and then ask other people to give their ideas and input. So we are currently working with the town to back up a little with, on making sure that we can have the BHS renovations happen, and we're trying to figure out how that could be done. We did submit a statement of interest on the high school renovation to the MSBA, asking for them to work with us to do that renovation. And we are hoping that they will approve it, but we are not holding our breath. So we are going ahead in conversation with the town to see how else we might be able to fund it if it's not, if the state is not going to be forthcoming. Regardless of that, and in the same time, we also know that we have two elementary schools that are bursting at the seams, we have two elementary schools that are even older than the high school, that are, in dire need of replacement, and we have enrollment pressures at the elementary level. And so we had discussed for next April, putting in a request with the state building authority for a state. level. And so we had discussed for next April, putting in a request with the state building authority for a statement of interest to request something to do with our needs at the elementary level. So as a committee, we are going to need to have a lot of conversation between now and whenever it's time for, to start writing the proposal about what that elementary configuration might look like. There, you know, we currently have four elementary schools. There's been, you know, do we want to keep four elementary schools? Do we want to go to three elementary schools? The size of the school would be an issue. We, you know, want to look at all those, what the fiscal implications are, and, and we are going to need to spend a lot of time, I think, in the coming year, talking about all of the pros and cons of all those different options. And I wanted to open up that conversation tonight and see what people have to say and see where we want to go, if we want to start that conversation this summer, or, or other ideas. I'm not saying one way or the other how we want to go ahead, but I wanted to make sure we had that conversation tonight. So if people want to comment now on that, that'd be great.
Again, Madam Chair, I just, I just want to, resources again. I know you've seen this information, but we've shared with you the April first enrollment data, and then with the NESDAQ, the ten-year projection that, that was done as part of our facilities study. So if we take out the out-of-district students in April one, we're at thirty-five eighty-one in two thousand nineteen, and they show us at thirty-five eighty-six. So you can see where they're, they're relatively accurate in their projection, which is again a good thing for two thousand nineteen, but then it also demonstrates, and I'll make sure I get you copies of this stuff, or Sharon, if you have these, it's showing again about another ten percent growth over the next, the next ten years or so.
Well, the next seven or eight years.
Seven or eight years, yes. Again, time goes by pretty quickly. So, yes. So, so I said, again, I can't guarantee that they're going to be that accurate all the way through their projection, but just to give folks some perspective on that, what we've also can't predict is whether the school building authority will support our high school project. This is our eighth submission. I think the feedback that we've gotten on our submission is that it's, again, it's, it's accurate. They've been out to visit this building twice. They all clearly say there's need. It just all depends how much revenue is generated from the one cent on the sales tax and how many other projects are in the pipeline. There's no memory to the submission, so whether we submitted twice or fifteen times, each year is a new year, so I might want to stress that. They, they make sure that they, they inform communities about that. And they, they have a criteria, and enrollment pressure is one of them. And again, we're not experiencing enrollment pressure in this building just because it was designed for more students that are here. Also didn't use to house lab administrative offices, cable access TV, preschool, central office. So again, it's certainly using the space that we have to its full extent. And it's not just the utilities of this building that are ending their life expectancy. I think a significant curricular area that comes up is our science, our science labs are all out of date, and we really need to focus on, on that. So this, again, this building is in dire need of a renovation, and the repairs are getting more and more expensive as, as we move forward. So again, I'm, I'm hoping that the state will have the resources to support our project, you know, in, in this round of, of requests, is what I would say.
Mr. Murphy?
I'll go first. The, speaking for myself, I think this is, in my opinion, the last year that we can realistically sit around waiting for the state to fund our high school improvements. You don't have to hear the word no too, too many times before you decide they're not, maybe not going to do it. And we need it. So I know we've had this discussion amongst ourselves before, but I think we'll continue to have this discussion, and I think maybe try to have a meeting with the selectmen or a subcommittee of the selectmen to kind of keep the conversation going. At some point, we're going to have to look into doing the repairs here on the town's dime. This is a huge building. It's an expensive building. It's a valuable building, and, and we have an obligation to, to maintain it. So if the state is not going to approve it under the MSBA formulas, unfortunately, as Dr. Conti said, we don't, fortunately, but unfortunately for MSBA purposes, we don't have a numbers crunch here. We're, we're running out of space, and that, those seem to be the situations that get the priority from the MSBA, at least at the high school level. So I think that's, that's one issue that I think we have to look at other avenues and start those discussions. And if we don't get good news next December, which is typically when the word comes out, then we have to be in a position to, to move forward with this. As far as the, the elementary schools go, as the chair mentioned, those, both of those buildings are actually older than the building we're in. Pine Glen and Fox Hill, they're both full. Fox Hill has actually got more students in it than the Memorial does, which is the new building. There's been talk about combining those into one large building at, at Fox Hill site, which is one option. Cuts, cuts out a, a school at that level, potentially some savings there. But if you do the quick math, if you add up the number of people, of students currently in the Pine Glen School to the total of students currently in the Fox Hill School, that's seven hundred and forty-three children. By comparison, Fox Hill School has, Francis Wyman School has five forty-one, Memorial has five ten, has four ten. So this, the building that would potentially house both the Pine Glen and the Fox Hill students would be almost half again bigger than our largest, largest school that we have online. And I would defer to the, the educators on this, but it seems to me as a layperson that an up to eight hundred student elementary school is, is, seems pretty large to me. Whether that's doable, I'm willing to listen, but I, it just sounds very large to me. And if we can't do that, combining it into one, then we're looking at potentially either rehabbing or replacing two schools. And again, those would both be expensive processes as well. So I think we have to have, start having those discussions, as the chair suggested, so that there can be some meeting in the minds as to which avenue we're going to pursue when it comes to the time to start going in that direction. As far as the procedure and how we do that, I'm open to ideas, but I would agree with the chair that I think sooner rather than later is a good idea to get those discussions going because time seems to creep up on us, and all of a sudden, it's going to be December, and we get bad news again, and now we're, you know, another six months has gone by, and we haven't really started talking about it. So I, I would be in favor of whether we're going to do a subcommittee to, to meet with maybe the administrators, or, you know, I'm open to any suggestions as far as that goes, but I think we do have to start looking at our options, having some talks about those options, getting some input from the educators as to what's a viable and workable solution and what isn't, and then start making some decisions. So obviously, we're coming up on the summer months, and tends, things tend to move a little slowly in the summer, so, you know, if we can start getting some sort of a process or a procedure in place with the idea that when September gets here, we kind of hit the ground running in those, having those discussions, then we'll at least have a few months of those discussions behind us by the time we get to December. And then depending on what kind of news we get from the MSBA, we'd be a little bit ahead of the ball in terms of where to go from there. So that's my two cents.
Ms. Monica?
I don't want to repeat everything that Tom said, so I'll just sort of make a few points. Tom and I are on the subcommittee with the selectmen, and we're in the process of setting up a meeting with them, with the subcommittee, to talk about the capital planning, the bond schedule, et cetera. I think the town knows that, what have we been, seven years in a row rejected by SBA? Now, if we had gotten the money the first or second year, the project would be completed probably by now, and we'd be ready to jump into the elementary project. But we've waited and waited, and we've been rejected all those times, and I think we all agree we can't wait any longer. There is discussion about phasing it at the high school, so I think it'll take time to, to do that. But at the same time, as Martha says, we have the elementary problem brewing. Well, it's pretty well brewed already. And so it is important that we look to when we can get into the bond schedule, not only for the high school, but for the elementary projects. And this is kind of a tough night to talk about big money items because we just looked at a massive amount of money that we need to pay for our transportation. And, you know, it's like the old saying, the faster you go, the behinder you get, you know? I'm just kind of reeling at all the things that we're faced with doing. And it's unfortunate that the high school has been delayed so long because we patiently waited for SBA, and they really don't have a category for us. And I think that we just can't wait any longer. It just isn't going to happen. So we have to find a way for the town to fund it. As far as the elementary goes, I think we need, we do have what Kevin Buckley did, the master plan, the most recent one. And I think we need to look at the options and talk about the options, but my personal point of view as a school committee member, thinking of the well-being of kids, families, parents, and what's expected of us by the town, I find it hard to think that we could build a great big school to take care of everything. I, I think we're much better off with four elementary schools. And one way or another, we need to either rebuild or rehab or do something with Fox Hill and Pine Glen, in my opinion. And we need to talk about it so that by the time it comes to fruition with the dollars, hopefully SBA will be funding about half of those projects. People will be used to hearing about it, and, and it won't be a huge shock and a huge stick of shock. So that's my two cents.
Madam Chair, just may I comment on that? And Ms. Nelson, I'll, I'm sorry. No, I just, I, I think sometimes people can approach the size of a school, like an elementary school, just from a, maybe an efficiency perspective, just in terms of the number of people you can fit in a building. But we have to deliver programming in that, in that building as well. So what I want sort of you to think about is the Francis Wyman School, again, is a relatively large elementary school. We have a five-day rotation in terms of our elementary specials. So currently, we have two physical education, one art, and two music. So the way that works on a five-day rotation is the gym has to be large enough because there are two home rooms that are getting gyms simultaneously because we have the five sections. There's one class getting art, and then we have, we typically combine two of the classes for music, and we have a large music room. If you have a elementary school that has eight sections, if you, again, we can, even though we can fit the bodies in the school, I'm not talking about fitting kids sort of in, in the school. If we're thinking about programmatically, unless you want to change the five-day rotation, then we're going to need enough gym space potentially for three or four classes of kids, enough art space for two classes of kids, and enough music space for those kids, then plus the teachers to teach that. So there may be, there's an operational cost that may not be super efficient to do that because, again, you may need one or two gyms, or you may need to think about doing PE differently. Or, again, the committee may want to change the pro, the program, but then that's another, that would impact all the elementary schools if you went to, say, a six-day rotation, or you wanted to cut back on the amount of PE, music, and art kids were receiving, just because it, logistically, it's hard to get the kids sort of to the spot to do that. So my point is, there's a cost to the building, and absolutely we'll look at the efficient ways to doing that. But then the operational costs, because the building's in use for, we hope, forty or fifty years, the operational costs vastly surpass the, the cost of the, the initial cost of the building, even though it's expensive. And then how you want that program delivered also has an impact on those, on those operational costs. So even if you, even if you can fit kids in, and you say we can save five or eight million dollars, you may spend or surpass that five or eight million dollars operationally in two or three years just by the additional staffing you may need to deliver the program that you want, or you may have to alter the program. And I'm not sure I've heard from the committee that you want to change the programming. So that's, that's, I think, part of the consideration when we're talking about elementary configurations or sizes or, or designs. So, Mr. Nelson, I'm sorry, I didn't-
I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Nelson.
To jump in.
I'll piggyback a little bit on what you said, Eric. And I think initially, when, when I first saw the, the master plan report, you think to yourself, well, maybe, maybe that makes sense just to build one larger elementary school. Maybe there's going to be some economies of scale. You won't need as many super, you won't need as many administrators. You won't need perhaps as many custodians, and maybe we can save money. I think the town might look at it that way as well. But what you're saying tonight is, we might need a bigger gym. We might need a bigger cafeteria. We might need more teachers to deliver programs so that we can deliver them all concisely. So that's, that's a good point that I think we need to, we need to get out there, and we need to, to let people know. The other thing that we need to keep in mind, I think, is initially, you would say, well, if we combine the Fox Hill and the Pine Glen, that's about seven, a school of about seven hundred and fifty people. So let's say we embarked on a five- or an eight-year process to do that and build a school that would hold seven hundred and fifty people. If you look at the NESDAQ reports, by the time we did that, which would need another three hundred and fifty, would need space for another three hundred and fifty kids. So that, that one building, combining that one building, would be obsolete by the time we got it done.
That's right.
So I don't, I don't think there's a three-school solution to the problem that we have. I think it's a four-school solution. The Memorial School, I don't want to say we made a mistake as a school committee. We asked the state to fund a bigger school, and they made us chop off, I think, four classrooms. And if they do it again, I think we ought to respectfully say no. I mean, you can fund the building that you will approve, and we'll build the one that we think we need, so we're not in this place, this predicament again. But looking at the enrollment numbers, I don't think there's any way we can do one school and solve our problem. I think we have to think about doing two more elementary schools. And it's going to be expensive. We're going to have to do it over a period of many, many years. But we've got to start planning for two elementary schools, I believe, and their schools are getting old. As I think Mrs. Monaco said, and probably Mr. Murphy as well, they're a lot older than the high school. I think Pine Glen is probably, what, early sixties? Late, late, late fifties, early sixties?
Early sixties.
What was it?
Sixty-two.
Sixty-two? And Fox Hill was a new school, I remember, years ago. That was probably sixty-seven, yeah. So they're getting up there in age. We've maintained them well, but I think they've, they've pretty much reached the end of their useful life. We need, we need new, modern elementary schools. And I, I don't think there's a, a three-school solution, looking at the numbers. And, you know, these numbers usually are conservative. And as Eric said, they're, they're, they're pretty close, what they did a couple of years ago. But every time I drive around town, I see knockdowns. The knockdowns are everywhere. The town's getting younger. Pardon me?
Aren't we over the number that they projected?
Well, I think Eric backed out the out-of-district placement. So we're pretty close. The thirty-six sixty-six is pretty close to the thirty-five eighty-six, if you back out. Is that what you did, Eric? You backed out the out-of-districts? But it's going to go up according to their numbers, three hun, three thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine in two thousand twenty-seven. And that's about how long it takes to build a school. That's three hundred and seventy-five more kids by two thousand twenty-seven, give or take one or two. So even if you look at NESDAQ's numbers, and I think in the past they have been conservative, we're going to have a major problem with space. And so I think we have to look at a four-school solution, and we have to get the word out there as to why one school's not going to work.
And again, through the chair, whether it's three schools or four schools, then many communities are considering grade configuration. So Arlington had huge space, Mrs. Monaco, and I, I will sort of give you the pros and cons. And Arlington used to have two middle schools, east and west. They shut down east for a long period of time, and they just reopened east as a sixth-grade academy. Needham has a sixth-grade school. And then their other middle, they made a seven and eight school, and that helped offload some of that. So- So we had, again, one of the things we had talked about is, say, even though there's a four-school solution, you could talk about maybe Pine Glen being pre-K and K and then taking all the students out of that or having it have one grade like all of grade five. The challenge with that, again, is not that the building couldn't be renovated to do that. It would be a programmatic choice, from my perspective, from the committee. And then you'd be busing either all three- to five-year-olds from all across town to one school. So the idea of a neighborhood school for those kids would be eliminated. Same thing would happen in grade five. And we, we'd have to redo our entire bus routing. You'd almost have to create a fourth tier of busing, which would have some significant cost too because you'd have to get all fifth graders to one spot in town as opposed to distributed by their neighborhood. So there's no sort of easy, cost-free way of doing this without significantly impacting the program. And that doesn't mean we shouldn't explore some of those ideas or activities, but there, but there's not anything that, like Pine Glen wouldn't, isn't configured now to handle 300 fifth graders. So we would have to, there would be significant renovations needed, even if that were to be the design that we did. And in addition to that, there'd be transportation costs that would be associated with getting, getting everyone from across town. So I think the cost that we're most familiar with and the programming that we have does lend itself to the four-school solution and the grade configurations we have. But even if we were to design a new Fox Hill school, it would have to be, again, Francis Wyman size or, again, even slightly larger to do that. And Francis Wyman, at some point, wasn't that a middle school? I think that's why they have the gym size. It's a junior high. Junior high school that they had. So I think we're fortunate that it has some of the specialist spaces that it does, the size of the cafeteria it does. So it would need to be a relatively large school to deliver the programmings anyway that we, that we want to have. And again, Pine Glen would need some renovations as well.
Thank you. I worked in a building in another district that had about 800 students in it. It was a very, I think the word is moving. There was always movement. It was never quiet. You're in our elementary schools in the smaller, 300, 400. And with the exception of moving specialists and they're going on time, there's, there's quiet. You're teaching in the classroom and there's quiet. There was never really any quiet in this building. There were also two sets of administrator because when you have that many students, they tended to break up a K through two administration team and then a three through five administration team. So, so looking at the saving of administrators, it's really not there. You, we're already seeing our administrators overwhelmed with trying to give quality feedback with the professional development, not professional development, the evaluation, thank you. And, you know, you can't just expand the building, give them more teachers, and expect it will get done. So you, you still will incur that there might be savings on, on heat or lighting, depending on how you configure the building. But I assume if we're taking 1960 buildings and we're upgrading and renovating them, we will be putting in those cost savings of LED lighting or the timing of the lights on and off with the movement, the whole heating units. So, so we will notice those like we did with Memorial when we do upgrade or change the buildings. But having worked in, in a building of that size, I personally, as a teacher, didn't feel as comfortable. And when you're working with, you know, younger students in a K1, K2, 3, it's different than high school students moving around, too. They're, they're a little more used to the movement and having others walking through the hallway whereas if you're kindergarten one. And then just thinking about when you have a fire drill, you're moving 800 kids. Again, high school level, we can say, get out, you know, they're a little more easily know what to do and what to follow through. But when you have kindergarten and you have seven, seven classes, eight classes, that you're getting out with first graders and second graders, it's a completely different animal for those teachers and those administrations. So, so personally, having been in that type of environment, I would not, I don't think it would be beneficial to Arlington as who we are of a community and who we are with our programming statute. So I would still be open to it because I do think we have a lot of administration who do look outside the box and have worked in many different districts and have understanding and might see it. But personally, the one that I was in, do not feel comfortable recommending that for our, our K through five building of that size. I do think we need to almost get together some sort of flow chart. Okay, when they say no in December, even though I don't want to be pessimistic, here's where we're going to go, option A, B, or C. What is it that we will be ready for? And how can we bring in the community into those discussions and put together the plans with the subcommittee through our selectmen and town administrator and purse keepers to see what is the best way in which to go through it? Would, you know, you want to look at the larger elementary school first building and then the smaller one? How, what would make more sense moving forward after the high school? If we're doing the high school in phases, do you want to do more of the smaller elementary school with the phases and then Fox Hill? So I think there are a lot of moving pieces in that regard that our town administrator and selectmen and ways and means would definitely be able to look and see what is the best way to juggle the pieces and make them fit so our town isn't in a crunch with the purse strings, so.
Other comments for now? So I sense that maybe during our summer meetings, we could talk about where we want to start in September on this conversation. Does that sound like the right timetable? Okay. So if you would, Sharon, if you would please make sure that we get to that in the summer meetings. Thank you. Okay. I also wanted to add to the old business you had put out. We wanted, needed to do something with the distance learning pilot. Is that correct? Can we put, do that under old business?
No, I think that was just honestly informational for you. You had already approved the pilot and I think Joe wanted to communicate to you what, what they were discussing. So I think that was informational.
So we are going to go forward with that pilot for the distance learning?
Yes, I think he's still waiting to do that and then we'll have to communicate that to the community, parents, and everyone else. I'm not sure he has full agreement yet. I have to catch up with him.
Okay, all right. So we're moving forward with that. All right. So under new business, the first item is the fiscal, the financial monthly update. And Dr. Conti, I'll let you explain.
No, again, Ms. Kosh went home. She said she really tried to stay and just couldn't do it. So we're going to do that next meeting. So again, I apologize for that. But it just wasn't possible this evening. So that'll be in two weeks.
Yep. And so, and is there anything we need to do with this?
Yes. So, so I have a few other things. So we have out-of-state travel. Next, so I just want to go through that quickly. High school track coach Matt Carr submitted an after-the-fact request for an out-of-state travel for himself and she precaged to attend and participate in a meeting in Connecticut on Thursday, April 18th. This request received in between school committee meetings. I did approve that trip at the time. And again, the policy is we need to return to get it. So I recommend that you approve a retroactive trip to Connecticut for track on April 13th.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained, the chair votes aye. That's 5-0-0.
And Cammer Shob is just having an outstanding year.
Do you know how he did this week?
No, I don't, but I'll get a summary for you.
Okay.
So, and then out-of-state travel approval, middle school principal Carrie Purchase has submitted an out-of-state travel request for four middle school students and teacher Barbara Sturtevant to attend the National History Day Finals in College Park, Maryland on June 9 through 13th. The four students will be participating in the competition. Patrick described that whole program to you and how outstanding our middle school students had done in their first competition. Students and their families will pay for travel and lodging. The school district will reimburse Ms. Sturtevant for student registrations and her personal airfare and lodging. It's recommended the school committee approve out-of-state travel for Ms. Sturtevant and four middle school students to College Park, Maryland on June 19, June 9 through 13th. And again, I do want to thank Ms. Sturtevant for all of her time and working with these kids. And this was, again, the first time that they had entered this event. And they just did an amazing job at that. It's reflective of not only of their efforts, but an amazing teacher who's working with them. So I would recommend this strongly.
So moved.
Second.
Before we vote, I just want to say I once was a judge for a history day event and it is a huge amount of work that the students put in. It's a huge amount of work for the teachers who supervise. And for our students to be going to the nationals on their first round is just very, very impressive.
One quick question for Dr. Conti.
Yes.
College Park, is that where the university, is that where they're having it?
Yes.
UMD? I visited that school one time. They have turtles everywhere, little small turtles.
The terrapins.
The terrapins, they're all different.
Alive?
No, no, they're statues. They're about three, four feet tall and they're all over campus. Great, great school. I hope they do well.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the chair votes aye. That's 5-0-0. And before we do this last item, Dr. Conti, I also wanted to raise, there's been some concern that was brought to the school committee's attention about one of our rentals at the Marshall Simons Middle School. We have begun to address it. Dr. Conti is in, in process of addressing it. We are looking into it. If necessary, we will look at other proposals for our policy. We were kind of surprised. So I just wanted to acknowledge that since it's been a conversational topic for a number of people. I don't know if anyone else has any other comments they want to make on that tonight?
Maybe at the next meeting we can get.
Hopefully, we'll have something more concrete at the next meeting. Dr. Conti or?
Yes. And I think part of the confusion was on the advertisements of this organization. They almost indicated that that was a permanent address. And I think I need to have that conversation with them. And obviously, we didn't produce that flyer and we're made aware of it. So we will, we will respond to that.
Okay.
Moving forward.
Thank you.
And then the last thing, John Porter does an incredible amount of work for us in the auditorium with sound and I think he's helped coordinate a offer from Leahy Clinic to donate a machine, an automated pill dispenser called a Parata. It's actually, it's a robot that distributes medications. We are not going to be using it for that purpose. Again, we are not going to be using it for that purpose. But it's a, it's a very sophisticated machine. And Mr. Porter is, again, coordinating this donation. I'll make sure I write to Leahy Clinic to thank them on our behalf. The robotics team is very interested in some of the parts and the pieces and the motors that exist in this. And then he also believes the help desk students can benefit from it as well as, he mentioned another group that I think, I think the kids are basically going to strip this thing down and repurpose it. I shouldn't say that too loudly for Leahy. It's going to be well taken care of. No, but I think the robotics team is going to use the, use the robot. And again, it's a, it's a very expensive piece of equipment. And I want to thank, again, Leahy Clinic especially, but Mr. Porter for coordinating this, this donation. And again, I just would like the school committee to vote to accept the donation on, on behalf and then I can thank Leahy Clinic.
I'm sure I've moved that the committee accept the gift from Leahy Clinic of the robotic pill dispenser machine, whatever we want to call it.
Second.
Any, seeing no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the chair votes aye. That's 5-0-0. Thank you. From Leahy. Okay. Is, is there anyone here for any public participation at this time? The committee does have a need for executive session tonight. The executive session under Mass General Law, C 30A, Section 21A, subsection 7, for the purpose of complying with any general or special law, specifically, General Law C 214, Section 1B, right to privacy, and General Law C 12A, Section 9. And to discuss contract negotiations, the school committee will only return to public session for the purpose of adjournment. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Russo?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Ms. Monaco?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. We are now in executive session.